Oh, hello. Is he back? Okay, we can start now.
Sorry.
No problem. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call to order the city council meeting for August 18th, 2014. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. And we'll move down to the consent docket, and there is one item on the consent docket, approval of minutes. Do any councilors wish to remove that item from the consent docket? If not, is there a motion on the consent docket?
Approval of the minutes of the meeting August 4th.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved five to zero. Patty, were all items for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's gonna take us down to a public hearing. I received public comment regarding the closing of a right-of-way of Fifth Avenue between Walnut and Pine Streets. Mr. Dorman, did we get good notice?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Dennison?
Good evening. Paula Dennison, Development Services, to present this request to you this evening. This is a request for closing of Fifth Avenue. The only portion of Fifth Avenue in the vicinity is located between Pine Street and Walnut. Highlighted in the yellow hatched area is the portion that is requested to be closed this evening. There are utilities located within the right-of-way. The blue that you see cutting across is the water line. The green is the sewer. There has been a change to the sewer since this map with the new work that is being done in that area, the sewer project. The sewer actually ends approximately at this location and extends north. So this segment of the sewer is not coming into play in this request. You can see that utilities are continuing on to serve the sorority. And as I understand, there is gas in the right-of-way as well. In order to continue to provide the utilities subsequent to the council's affirmative action on closing this portion of Fifth Avenue, the utilities would either need to be relocated or an easement provided over the utilities that remain. Fifth Avenue is, I'll go back to the map, the only alternative exit from Pine Street, cutting across to Walnut. The access to Pine is taken directly from Sixth Avenue. So this is additional way in and out of accessing Pine Street without having to get on to Sixth. One of the discussions has been to provide fire and emergency access because, and if I may switch over right quickly, we pulled up our GIS as well so I could give you just a little broader view of what is entailed. So as you can see, Fourth Avenue, Walnut, this is Sixth, Pine, and this is the full section of Fifth Avenue that is requested to be closed. There's not an extension of Fifth on either the east or the west of Pine and Walnut Streets in the immediate vicinity. So this does function as the secondary alternative access for all of the properties on Pine Street. Therefore, staff recommends in your report you will see an alley to be constructed. Using this map, I'll demonstrate just a little bit. The proposal is for the sorority that sits here at the corner of Fourth and Walnut. Any positive closing would allow them to remove the properties upon their purchase, to remove the houses on the two properties on the south side of Fifth Avenue because of their expansion needs for their sorority. Instead of locating elsewhere in the community, then they are wanting to expand their current facilities. Therefore, this request to close this section of Fifth Avenue. It would involve taking out any structures, and that addition would be physically constructed over what is now the Fifth Avenue right-of-way. And also, there is additional parking, or easement actually, that would be necessary for this property because they take their direct access from Pine Street and Fifth into the parking spaces located on the south side of their property. So the closing of Fifth, this area here, would need to have an access easement so that these people parking for this property could continue to cross that. Then it would become private property and access. The reason for that is because all of Fifth Avenue was platted with this addition to the south. So the closing of this right-of-way would then have the property going with the properties to the south. It would not be divided north and south as some are. So that's the need for that easement. So now that I've probably thoroughly confused everything going on here, because there's a lot going on in this area, I will be happy to take any questions. I do want to make you aware, you have provided at your seats a letter of support that was received today. That's why it was not in your packet. Those should have been distributed out to everyone. And also, on social media, there has been voiced some concern from two owners who received notice in the area in opposition. I do not know if they're here this evening, but they did voice their opposition through the use of social media for this request. Any questions of me on this request right now?
I have a couple of questions. Can you go back to the map?
This one or the other?
That one, that's perfect, yeah.
Okay.
Those two houses, so they're gonna tear those down? You said they're gonna expand into that, or is that, someone else owns those? Because it looks like they have, like they used the Fifth Street to pull out onto that one house right there. And so I'm just curious.
I do not know. Do we confirm if they had purchased? Have not confirmed yet.
If my memory is correct, I thought we re-zoned that for another gentleman so he could build like another house there.
Not at the very corner.
Oh, it's not that one, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Our, and their representative is here this evening, the sorority's representative, and a number of their members are for the purchase status of these properties. But it is our understanding that in order to do the expansion, they are looking to, if they have not already purchased these two properties, it would require the demo of the structures on the properties in order for them to build as they intend to.
Okay. And then they would have to purchase some land from all these other homes to build an alley? Or did I misunderstand you on that?
The alley actually could be located anywhere between Pine and Walnut across this property.
Oh, okay.
These properties are wide enough.
Okay.
It would just be, take Fifth Avenue and locate it a little further south, in essence, is what it would be doing.
But that's something they would have to do before they could proceed with building something else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That is our recommendation.
So would it really be Fifth Avenue relocated, or would it be an alley? Because to me, those are two different things.
Yes, because Fifth Avenue in this section of the community does not continue on and have further transportation system linkages through it, then an alley would suffice because the alley would still allow for two-directional traffic.
Okay.
Anything else at this time?
Could you just give us a quick reminder? The action tonight that's being asked of the city council is to close the right-of-way.
Correct.
Does the action by city council actually remove that from the plat and the use as a roadway?
What the closing does is it removes the right of the public to utilize Fifth Avenue. It does not remove the street. It does not take it off of a platted document. That process is the vacating of this right-of-way through district court, which would be a subsequent action. And district court can only act to, long-range, actually remove the street if that's the applicant's intent. District court can only act with a closing ordinance from the city of Stillwater and an affirmative agreement to the vacation suit that would be through district court.
And then, just curious, and I don't even know if I can ask this, but will we get money for the purchase of that? I mean, don't we own that, or no?
Public owns it.
So would the city, do they have to purchase it from the city once the district court vacates it, or no? They just get it?
Right.
When it's no longer in the public domain, the underlying property owner takes possession of it. So basically, the abutting owners to the center of the street would take possession on each side.
Okay. So they would only get half of it right now if they didn't own the other two homes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so if we close it, then we are basically saying this is no longer public property?
Well, you're saying it's precluded from public use at this time. It has to be vacated by a district court before the actual title would revert to the adjoining property owners.
As I understand, it would not, if there are utilities in that area, we would still retain easements for those utilities, if those utilities are remaining. I mean, even if the street were to be vacated by the court, we could still retain the easements from the utilities, which means they could not bill over.
Yes, that is correct. That's one of the two options that have been discussed. Retention through the vacation process of easements over any public utilities that are not being relocated. But that does restrict the ability to construct permanent structures within or over those easements. The other alternative is to relocate those public utilities.
So why are we doing this now if the other properties aren't owned yet?
Any adjacent owner can request a closing of a public easement or a public way. And as I indicated, I do not have confirmation, but the sorority and their representative are here, and they can confirm whether or not the purchase has gone through, or the acquisition has gone through on these properties.
Any other questions for Paula right now?
Thank you.
Okay. We do have several requests, so we'll open up a public hearing. Our first set of requests all seem to be in favor of the application, so I'll call on Roger Goetz. Actually, we've got several people here. Come on up, Roger. Just as a reminder, we have several requests tonight. And just as a reminder to those that have signed up to speak, there will be a timer. Mr. Dorman, if you can explain the lights to the speakers.
Actually, the timer...
The time's up there. It'll flash at you and yell. If you're speaking, it gets to zero and flashes at you. You can finish your thought. You don't need to cut it off mid-word, but finish your thought, wrap it up, and we'll move on. And then, another thing that I would like to request is that, let's make sure that our comments are all kept in good taste. Let's do our best to not just repeat what other people have said, because just because something is said more than once doesn't make it more true or not. So repetition doesn't help. And Mr. Goetz?
I might need more than three, just because of the question.
Public hearing, you got five.
Okay, we're going. Can we get back to the map? How do we get back to this map? There we go. The sorority has bought those two houses. We've been working on this for about two years. They're trying to solve their parking needs so they can get the girls off the streets. They went over here and built a parking lot. That's first phase. They've looked around, looked around for property to expand their house, and basically came down to, they could buy those two houses, which they finally did. If we could close the street, then the house can be expanded. Right now, that house can't be expanded any further than that right there. They've bought the lots. We've talked to staff for about a year about how to go about this, and it's getting really messy, but I think we can make it work. Because they bought the two lots that are part of that south subdivision, we made the application to close because we had both sides of the street, knowing that the apartments over here on this one area, you know, we're gonna have to maintain access to that. And I didn't realize that the ownership would all go to this lot, because I didn't go back and check the plat. Sorry, John. But we're agreed that, you know, there won't be a problem maintaining access. We even last year worked with the sewer department. Instead of taking this new sewer through here, did an easement so we could run the sewer line up here. We made it wide enough so we could also route the water line through there. So the sewer was gonna go out to Walnut, up and come back around. We granted an easement so that the sewer line could be routed right through there in anticipation of this. We've got things to work out. First off, we thought maybe a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead turnaround here at the end of Pine. That wasn't acceptable to staff and probably not the neighborhood. So an alleyway, you know, a public accessible way to get through this property is our goal. Now, when we get to the closing, you know, you guys close it, and you know, it's sort like, could you delay it until we get all the building plans done and things like that? They wouldn't be able to start this project till next summer. Just get your architect plans, get through the district court, get utilities relocated. So some way or the other, I'm sure Mr. Dorman can work it out, but we can leave that street open somewhere or the other. I don't know. Just give me that look. I mean, that's our goal. It's not to go out there right after you all pass this ordinance to close the street. But the architect needs to know that we have that property to work with so we can take the next step to get the proper housing they need, and then we'll build the infrastructure and relocate the infrastructure as needed. Questions?
Is your client in agreement with the conditions that staff has recommended?
Yes.
One thing I don't see in, maybe I just don't, I'm not picking it up out of those staff recommendation conditions, is the access easement to the apartments.
That's been shown on the drawing I gave them, and it wasn't a drawing that came in, but that needs to happen.
They'd be in agreement?
Yes.
That is a condition?
What I gave staff really shows a building proposal would be from this corner, coming south somewhere along here and back up. I mean, it might not even be to the middle of what's now Fifth Street. Because of this easement we put in over on this end, that house can't expand any further east. It really needs to go south. So this would be kept open for access to the sorority and to this apartment complex. Then, I mean, honestly, those people that live there probably go through that way if they wanted to. It's just not a marked public way. But they also have access across, would have access across here.
The alleyway that's been discussed, how wide?
We haven't even gone there yet, but if it's fire, you know, that could be 20 to 26 feet wide, fire-approved, proper radiuses, those kinds of things. We hadn't even got into that detail. And that's why, sort of, we need a lot of discussion. We'll make it work, but staff's guidance was, we need to get it here and make sure we don't spend a lot of money before you all, bless it, happen.
Any questions for Mr. Goetz?
How close would the alley be to those second houses?
You're asking a question we don't have an answer to yet. One of the issues is you get into a radius off of this street, and it needs to be big enough that vehicles can turn in and out, and that then places the alley further north than five feet from the property line type of thing. I don't have an answer yet. That's a design question we haven't gotten to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have a request to speak from Kelsey Mullins. Yes, if you'd step to the microphone, if you'd give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Christine Evans, and I live at 1523 West Fourth Street, which is the house in question. So that's me.
The sorority house or the...?
Yes, ma'am, the sorority house. Can I go ahead? Okay. I'm actually vice president of committees for Fimeu, the house in question, and I'm just here to speak on behalf of the girls. I know I've lived in this house for two years now, and 44 of us are allowed to live in the house right now. And I know in a house full of 216 girls, that's not very many compared to a lot on campus. And a house, to me, is really the heart and home, or like the heart of the sorority. And with the space we have now, it is very hard to get all our members there at once and to have everything there with everyone at one time, just because of the space availability. I know it affects our ritual, it affects even just time to get together and be together just because we simply don't have enough space in our dining rooms or living rooms and things like that. This expansion, right now, I know it's just the very basis of closing the street, but it really would get the ball rolling on expanding this for us. And I know it's something very important to us because it really is important to a sorority to be close and get to spend time together, and this expansion ultimately would just mean that for us. I think we make great neighbors. I haven't seen any complaints or anything for the two years I've lived there, as well as I know we just received the Rose and White Award, which is nationally, it's the second highest honor, and it means like the most improved chapter in the nation. So I know we really are making great strides in the sorority, and right now, our only like thing holding us back would be that we just don't have the space. So the closing of the street would really just get the ball rolling on this project, and so I'm here to just support it, I guess. Do you all have questions I can try and answer?
Any questions for Ms. Evans?
Yes. So are you planning to add any beds to the house, or is it just gathering space?
I actually have not been involved in a lot of the planning, but I believe that ultimately there will be an extra living space, and so there will be more beds added. But I don't know the exact dimensions or anything.
Any of your group here that might know?
Can I ask him?
Yes. Yes, and I'm on the list too, so I will...
Oh.
Thank you.
She'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank y'all.
Are you Ms. Cupp or Ms. Ashbaugh?
I am.
She's both of them.
I'm not Ms. Cupp.
Okay. Next, we'll call in Sherri Ashbaugh.
Okay. My name is Sherri Ashbaugh, and I'm the president of the House Corps for the sorority, Fimeu Sorority here on Stillwater. Currently, we, as she said, currently we can only have 44 girls sleep, live in the house. Whenever recruitment was over, we took 60, no, I'm sorry, 71 new potential members. So next year, whenever, it would be wonderful if we would have an ability to be able to have those girls move into the house, to be able to have that communal living experience and all of those kinds of things. We have no way to be able to put that many people in. Our intentions, as far as how many we plan to build for, we hope to be able to house between 75 and 80 girls, that's how many beds we have, with dining room space and living room space and that kind of, those kinds of spaces for like 200 people. Currently, I know that the university can't even house all the freshmen they've got. They've got them scattered all over to various and sundry places. So that would alleviate one thing. The other thing is that we plan to be able to provide off-the-street parking for all of those people, as it shows, we already have purchased one parking lot. We already, we were very good neighbors in complying with all of the rules and regulations as to how it had to be and how many spots could be in it, and what kind of fence we needed to put up, and what kind of lights it needed to have, and what kind of drainage issues needed to be addressed as far as the neighborhood was concerned, and we complied with all of those. And we have every intention of complying and making sure that the people who live on Pine would still be able to get to Walnut through an alleyway. We have every intention of complying with making sure that all easements and all of those kinds of things would be able, people would be able to get wherever they need to be able to get. I mean, currently, the people from the apartment, one of the girls just told me, people come down Pine all the time and drive through the easement that we have there on the side of the house, you know? They already do that now, so I'm sure they would continue to do that in the future. So it isn't going to be that we ever intended to, you know, not let anybody be able to get wherever it was that they wanted to get to. We looked at lots of other places in order to be able to purchase property, but property isn't, you know, is hard to find. And so after visiting with the city first and saying, you know, we can't make our lot any larger unless we do this, but that still isn't gonna make it larger with the street, and them advising us and saying, well, these are the things, these are the constraints that you need to have, this is how you need to go about doing this, we have complied to the best of our ability and will continue to do so. Does anybody have any questions?
Question for Ms. Ashbaugh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Penny Cupp.
She is in not making.
In not making, okay. Yeah, we do have several additional requests, and I'd like to call on Sue Sumter.
I'm a bit nervous and emotionally involved. I have lived at 525 Pine in '53 and '54 through, till I married in '56. Still own it, we own it. My husband and I own it now. It's a rent house. But used to, I could walk to the college, you know, down the highway, but that thing is so hard to get on. Now, right now, I didn't know about the alleyway before I signed up for my speaking. But right now, that house is for lease or sale. What would that do? That is a corner lot that I'm told is prime location on Sixth Street, 525 Pine. Now, what would this do, I'm curious, to the price and value of my property? Now, the alleyway would allow bikes to go, now, when I leave Mom's house, I call it Still Mom's, when I leave there now even, now it's closed up, and I have signed to allow the city to go through there, the sewer line. Water lines have been gone through there. One time, the city wanted to put a water line to a neighbor. They said they would have to go across the highway. We signed. We didn't get anything out of this. We've been extremely cooperative with things with the city. I still want to be, but I don't want to see that property damaged. I don't want to see it decreased. They saved the pecan tree. The city made sure that they didn't cut that, it's the most blessed pecan tree anywhere on the corner of Pine. Now, but, now to me, an alleyway, I would say, if we're gonna do it, we, I belong to this city, if we're gonna do it, then call that a street. Don't call it an alleyway. If they're gonna make a good street through there. We also own 517 Walnut. See, that would be, I believe, the fourth house, if you look up there. I believe Dr. Youngers has two houses next hours before that corner lot that own Walnut toward Fifth Street. But we own either the third or fourth street there. So I just have questions, and part of it was, there's no sidewalk on that highway, and you certainly cannot make a left sensibly, and you certainly can't sometimes even get on there. So during construction, all is to be considered. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Paul Minasian.
I'm Paul Minasian. I own 507 South Pine. Again, the plans that we got didn't show anything about an alleyway. Again, the plans that we got didn't show anything about an alleyway, but I do have questions on the alleyway. You know, how wide is it? Is it concrete? Is it dirt? Is it gravel? You know, the other thing is, when they do this, they're going to be taking away, I think it's two parking spots. So, we getting, is the alleyway going to be big enough that you can park on it too? There's a lot of questions not being answered, you know? It's just very vague, you know? And they're saying they're going to add seventy-five to eighty girls, so I, you know, where are they going to be parking? You know, and there's a lot of things that are very vague on this, on this thing. So, before you went forward, I would hope you kind of hammered down a few final details. You know, if they're putting in a gravel road, that ain't the same thing as the concrete road that's there. So, and that's all I have today.
Thank you.
And our last request to speak is Scott Petty.
I'm Scott Petty. I live at 5821 Trenton Avenue. I own the home at 503 Pine, which is on the end of the street, the last house next to the apartments seen in the diagram. And I've owned that home for thirteen years. I was not aware either of, of the possibility of putting an alley. That is, that is appealing, but at the same time, I know that being the last house on the street there on the right is, I'm going to get the, the turnarounds, the people that don't want to use the alleyway. Those are going to pull into my driveway to turn around. As has already been mentioned, it's pretty tough to turn left onto Sixth Street, because the property on the northeast corner is so overgrown, you can't see. You can't see unless you're almost into the intersection there. So, it, it would be, losing the parking spaces concerns me a bit, because you can't park on the east side of Pine. There's no parking there. And I appreciate the service that the board, that the council provides to our city. I know you guys have a tough job, and you really put a lot of thought into the planning of our community. And, and having been Greek, I can appreciate their growth and their desire to grow. And I worked at the university for fifteen years. So, I, I love the university. I think it's a big part of who our, what our community is all about. I do hope there's an alternative. I do hope that if it is going to be a paved alleyway, it's at least the same size as the street. I still am afraid that there are going to be people that get to the end of that street and realize they can't go through, so they're going to turn around in my driveway. So, that's, the, the sum of my concern is safety, and I think that, that kind of captures everything. I, I do want to mention also, the council denied closure of Seventh Street for the United Methodist Church several years ago. It was a very thoughtful consideration, a, a, a very good community member, and that was about emergency services, I think, and safety. We've been able to cross that street to, to use our family life center, and it's been fine. This is obviously a different deal, but that was, what I thought was a very thoughtful, didn't really impact the, the neighbors living there, at least the through, the through neighbors. I think probably some did speak against it, but the city denied that closure, and, and just want you to think about that as you consider this same thing. Thank you.
That being all our requests, we will close our public hearing and ask Ms. Dennison to come up.
Before I give staff recommendations, if I could just answer a couple of the questions that I heard. Width of an alley, the minimum dimension requirement of an alley right-of-way is twenty feet. The minimum pavement width is sixteen feet. In order for fire and emergency vehicles to utilize an alley, the pavement width must be twenty feet, so the full twenty-foot of right-of-way must be paved. And also, for emergency vehicles and the weight of the fire trucks, gravel does not support that. It does have to be a concrete street. So, although it would not be a typical fifty-foot right-of-way, with a twenty-seven-foot street pavement section, it would be the full width of the right-of-way.
Just two questions. I'm not sure how much it matters, but alley versus street, I mean, what are we talking about? There's this semantics, or is there really meaning in the difference? Fifth Street is basically an alley, since it's closed off on both ends.
And it's, the current Fifth Street condition functions more as an alley and is designed more as an alley, as opposed to any new street that is being built.
Do you know how wide Fifth Street is?
The right-of-way is thirty-four feet wide. The actual, the actual pavement is twenty-six feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. So, the alley is a reduced version of the existing Fifth Street that cuts through there now.
But there is parking allowed, at least on one side of Fifth Street, is it there?
And there would not be on the alley.
Right.
So, it would have the full twenty-foot width utilized for two-directional traffic. Let's see. The distance from the alley to the houses, the second set of houses, there is no required distance from property line, but there are from structures. The structures, so the north side of these properties, these houses, the requirement under city code is ten feet from an alley. And therefore, we would not encourage the design to make these structures legally non-conforming. We would want the design of the alley, the location of the alley, to recognize that minimum of that ten-foot separation from the structures. But like Mr. Go said, to get those larger equipment vehicles in the alley, the turning radiuses and all, may have to be pushed a little further to the north on the two lots that he did confirm had been purchased.
Pushed more than ten feet, is that what you're saying? City code is ten feet from a structure that maybe have to push further?
May have to, yes, because of the turning radius, because, well, we'll have to evaluate if it proceeds to where he does the design of the alley. The turning radius cannot cross against somebody else's private property. It would need to be maintained within the sorority's property that they own, getting from one to the other. Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, I'll go on to the recommendation of staff.
I guess, my question on the alley, is it a, is it a question of convenience, or is it a question of safety? I mean, is it, like, code, we have to have that there? Because, I mean, to me, I mean, it's really not too, I mean, you can get off on Sixth to both the streets. I mean, it's just, the concern I heard was turning left off of Sixth. I mean, and that's, you live on, right on Sixth, so it's going to be a concern no matter what.
Neighborhood?
I'm just curious if it's convenience or if it's a fire code, police code?
Some of both. Neighborhood convenience, obviously. Emergency response time, it is a convenience, being able to get from one street to the next, next, when you have that connectivity between them. The other alternative to not constructing an alley is to construct what's called a hammerhead or a turnaround, large enough for the emergency response vehicles. And that, that can be quite large, depending on the current conditions and the multiple ownerships that would be involved in that case. So, it's some of both. But yes, you heard from the neighborhood convenience, getting, getting in and out. Staff's recommendation, we do recommend approval of this closing request, but we do have five altern, five conditions of that approval. Those are outlined also specifically in your reports. Providing easements for any remaining utilities prior to the district court vacation action or reserve those through the vacation process. Provide private access easement prior to vacation, that would be any access that need to be maintained to the other adjoining property, properties, where Fifth Avenue, the closing of it and the subsequent removal of it might impact their access. All relocated public utilities be designed, constructed, and accepted with any necessary easements prior to the district court action of vacation. The alternative access, i.e. the alley, be designed, constructed, and accepted prior to the vacation, and any other associated public access easement or dedication of right-of-way for the alley be accepted prior to the vacation. Those are staff's conditions with our recommendation.
Good question there.
Just the first four are fairly straightforward, that we would put on any sort of closing like this. The last one's a little more significant, but I'm curious why you did, we didn't have a staff recommendation to continue to have access to the apartment complex parking and that they were required not to impede that?
That falls under this private access easement.
Okay, so that's what you mean by that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Anything else for me?
Yes.
Okay.
And it may have just been the way you, you said it a moment ago, but it was when we were talking about the alley must be, have a ten-foot setback from structures. And what I heard you say was, you would not suggest creating a non-conforming opportunity. That, I, in my opinion, that would need to be a condition, that any alley built would need to be complying with current city code. Am I, what am I missing between what you said and what I'm saying?
Since we have not had the design of the alley at this time, and of course, this is step one in, in any design for this project, then I just, I threw that out there in response to a concern of the separation from the alley to the current structures that would be remaining. Although staff cannot require something in addition and above, we can suggest, and we can hope that the designer will take into consideration any noise, vibration, whatever impact the proximity of that alley to those remaining structures would have.
But code requires ten feet from the structure.
From the structure.
At a minimum.
At a minimum.
Right.
Yes, yes. And we, I have not been out there to, to take a measurement of how far those structures are from their property lines. They looked very close, so they may only be two feet from the property line. So, having the alley right at the property line would only give a two-foot separation, having the alley, as you suggested. And I did throw in any alternatives, and one of the alternatives, the middle one, approve the closing with additional identified conditions. And that is an option that the council has, based upon all of the testimony that y'all have heard here this evening also.
Just maybe a question for Mr. Dorman. Would a proper, maybe not proper, legal condition on this type of application be for any type of screening or buffering on the south side of an alleyway?
If you wanted to impose that as a condition, you could.
Can you also, someone, I can't remember which person talking said it, but we're, the city's not paying for the alley, correct?
That's correct. Any of, any of the?
If that question was raised, we're not paying for it. So, what, we're, I mean, they, I can't remember who said it, but I think they said, why not just call it a street? If we're building it, we're not building it. It would be Mr. Go, or he's not building it, but the people doing the project, it would be?
That is correct. The developer is responsible for any dedication of easements, rights of way, relocation of utilities, design, construction, dedication of any public street, alley, whatever the case may be, is their responsibility.
Perfect. Any other questions for Ms. Dennison? I guess, actually, what was staff recommendation again?
To approve with the listed conditions.
Okay. Any other question for Ms. Dennison? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We've heard from staff, we've heard from the public, and we have staff's recommendation to approve with the listed conditions. It's also in our report. What are you guys thinking about?
Well, just to get it on the table, I would make a motion to approve the closure application with staff recommendations on the conditions. I just tell you what, I mean?
I'll second it.
Second, a second.
Just for, so we can get discussion, okay? We have a motion and a second.
Now, can I go?
Please.
I would be more reticent of this closing if Fifth Street went through in either direction at least one block, but since it's effectively and practically just moving Fifth Street down, you know, just a very small distance, and I don't blame the residents who are concerned about turning left onto Sixth. I can't imagine having, having to do that every day. This gives, having that as a condition gives them that out, literally, to, you know, choose another direction. So, for the greater good, I think the house does need to expand. It's a great idea to increase the beds. We, we know we need them, and the house is saying that they will get off the street with their parking, and that's another benefit for this, for this area. So, I, I'm not seeing the downside. So, that's why I made the motion.
I see a downside. People who own property there, bought their property and are concerned about parking, and an alleyway takes away parking, so.
But they should have a net gain in parking when they move to those other two lots. As, they'll be, get off of the street and into their parking lot. And that's what I heard, so.
But when you add forty-some new people, how do you, they will be? It's okay.
I, I feel very comfortable that if they have some sort of building application, before they get a building apartment, the plans are going to have to comply with whatever park, parking requirements are going to be necessary according to the beds.
I'm also not comfortable with make, with recommendations without a design. It just feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't seen everything, and I feel like we can only suggest, not require, and.
But the conditions would be requirements.
Staff can only suggest. We, we can require.
We're putting conditions on the closure.
Okay.
Are there any requirement, I mean, what, if there are concerns? I mean, that, that's what these type of discussions are for, is, is there a way to meet the concerns and the goals of all parties in question, without splitting a baby in half?
So, I don't know that we have met the concerns of the property owners.
And that's why, I mean, that's exactly why we could apply additional conditions if those type of conditions can meet concerns. Some concerns will just never be met, no matter what would happen, but I think some could.
I, I heard several of the speakers say they didn't know about the alley conditionally being a requirement, and that seemed to alleviate some concern. As to, it would be nice to have all the design laid out in front of us, but I'm not sure that's fair to the applicant to go to that expense and effort and time if they don't know we're willing to close. So, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, but I, I think they've made a reasonable request and provided us enough information.
Blake, can you put the map back up of the property?
While he's doing that, are, are we going to see the final, like, this says must be done prior to vacation? Will we see that, or will that just go to Development Services? Just, okay.
That would go through legal and Development Services, wouldn't it?
Okay. So, wouldn't, this wouldn't come back to us? Nothing, unless there was some type of rezone or something, but nothing else would come back to us?
New easements are required, the easements would come back here for?
Right.
Dedication and acceptance.
Well, and possibly rezoning if those two lots become part of the property.
Do we know what those are zone? Sorry, I should ask that.
That's okay. The existing sorority and the properties, even the, almost. The existing sorority and the properties, even the, almost the full block to the south or RTM, which is the two-family residential multifamily.
Paula, while you were, in my, in my discussion with you, you suggested that if they would, they would have to remove existing structures to construct the alley, or relocate utilities, construct improvements, such improvements would be accepted by the council.
Yes. Public, public improvements. Any public improvement, the relocation of the water line, that is actually required to be accepted by the council because it is a public improvement. Built, constructed, designed, tested, passing the test in accordance with the regulations and the standards that the city has accepted. That would include, and does include, any water, sewer, street. Those are the primary public utilities that would be affected here. Of course, the sewer has been relocated already, so mainly it's just going to be the water and the street.
Street, alley?
Street, alley, yes, yes.
So it's not, I mean, it does, there's still more process?
Absolutely. The, the council's process will not be such as this public hearing is unless a rezoning. Acceptance of easements, acceptance of dedications, whether it's a right-of-way or the actual improvement, those end up on the consent docket because that's just a procedural matter for the council. It already has come through all of the requirements, design, construction, testing, et cetera, that is commonplace across the rest of the city. Yes, ma'am.
But just to not set up an expectation that wouldn't necessarily require providing the council the design plan for any other structural modifications, it would just specifically be for that easement, that, that utility improvement.
Correct. Yes, yeah. Everything is at staff level where this is concerned, except for the required action by the council to actually accept what is being given to you. Done, sir?
Just a brief point.
Yes, sir.
I, I just, I get a sense when we talk about alley, that the connotation is the little narrow alleyways that we're used to seeing. What we're prescribing here, just for clarification, 20-foot paved alleyway is, is very, is almost unique in the city. We don't have any quite that wide, very many. And it's the term, it's going to look like a street. We have some relatively new paved streets in the city that are narrower than that. You'd think it's an alley, but it's a street. It's just a matter of terminology. If you're going South Kelly, which is the street immediately on the west side of the car wash off of Sixth, that's a street, but it's probably narrower than the proposed alley. Don't get, I just don't think you get too hung up on the terms. It's, it's a 20-foot wide, two-lane roadway, whatever it's called. What's called an alley or street would be 20 feet wide, and so that, I think it's important to keep in mind. It's not, it's not a typical little alley.
Is it still public property? If Fifth Street is public property and then it's not, is the alley then-
The alley would have to be dedicated. The city is public property.
But there's no parking on the alley?
No.
Why can't we call it a street?
I plan to.
And why can't we provide parking there? Why can't we do that? Can we require that?
The, the alley standard that we have sets forth the 20-foot right-of-way with the 16 to 20-foot pavement width. Street standard would, would require a 50-foot right-of-way, which is going to be almost the width of the two lots, which is going to be in excess of what's out there existing. So from a semantic terminology standpoint, we've got two choices, the alley and that standard, or street and that standard, nothing to fit in the middle. If they wish to build a, as I use, coined the term this morning with Mr. Galloway, a super alley, and they want to make it a wider right-of-way, a wider pavement, that's their option, and we'll review it and design it, but internally not meeting the street standard, it will not be coined as a street.
And Mr. Weaver pointed out, it's a, it's a one-block-long section, and most street criteria are designed for-
Connectivity, additional-
If it were a two or three or four-block-long street, then you'd probably say, yes, it needs to be a street 50 feet wide. When it's a low-volume, one-block-long, the question is, is it really warrant a street standard?
Correct.
By the way, I think you guys may have heard thunder. We have got the best emergency management people approximately 60 feet away from us, and they're going to let us know if there's an issue, so we can continue concentrating on the topic at hand.
We'll get warnings flashed on that red sign.
Quick question, and this, just to kind of light the fire a little more, could we call it a one-way street? Since we're only talking about Pine going, I mean, because the people on Walnut, obviously, they don't want to go to Pine, because the people on Pine want to go to Walmart to get out the other way. What's the code for a one-way? Is it 25 feet instead of 50?
It, it is less. However, staff did discuss that, and we believe that there will be people accessing Pine Street who will be coming from north of Fourth Avenue, and it'll be much easier for them instead of having to come all the way down to Sixth or meander some other way around just to get back up Pine, if they have this two-way mechanism to continue to connect. And that's what the neighborhood's used to. The neighborhood is used to that connection between Pine and Walnut Street for two-directional traffic.
Okay, goes back to the convenience. Okay.
Would it be redundant to have a condition that the, a dedicated alleyway or street, any type of access-type right-of-way that would be dedicated to the public, that it is, does have a 10-foot setback from the south property line? Is that redundant from city code? Is it necessary? Is it not necessary?
I, I think that would be a positive move by the council to put that requirement in. It would protect the existing adjacent properties on the south.
Section asked that question. There are several people in the audience that did not sign up. Is there anyone in the audience that owns the, the lots, the second lot south? They were, either of those two that Paula's got the cursor on?
504 Pine and 509 Walnut.
Is that one yours, Mr. Denison?
No, but I know 504 Pine, I believe that's the one you were talking about. They're going to be building a big structure, and since that wasn't in the plans of what we got noticed on, that might affect his building plans and everything that alleyway had, because that was not-
So why, why wasn't that in the plans? Why wasn't the alley in the plans? Is that what you're saying? Why not? Because three people said that.
In the, in the closing application?
I guessed, yeah.
Okay, well, the, what is before you this evening is whether or not to hold the hearing for the applicant's request to consider closing to public use this Fifth Street. Without having a, a mechanism by which the applicant could affirmatively rely on a positive action by the council, there's a large expenditure of funds involved in designing an alley. They've already expended the funds, as, as the council has heard, on the purchase of the two adjacent properties in the hopes that the right-of-way could be considered for closing for their long-term growth and expansion.
Councilor Noble, what I, what I heard and what I interpreted and put in together, the notice that was sent out would have been notice for hearing to close right-of-way. The reports that were put online that we first would have seen, was it late Thursday or Friday, would be the same thing that anyone in the public could have seen that. That was the first time that any conversation of an alleyway would have been out there. It's the first time I heard anything about a potential alleyway.
It's not a required component of a closing application, but it's been developed as additional information in this closing. Is that correct?
That, that is absolutely correct. This, this, the alley discussion came up as concerns from your staff were identified with a recommendation to approve the closing request. If our recommendation had been to not approve the closing request, there might not have even been discussion of an alley. But as an additional mechanism to still provide that transportation system connection and convenience, then the alley was part of the discussion at staff level, and that's why it is presented as part of our recommendation.
Paula, can you stick your recommendations back up there? The five?
Yes, sir.
How would we modify? I would be willing to amend my motion to include the five conditions, but I would like to modify the last one to incorporate the requirement for that 10-foot setback.
You could just accept the staff recommendation with the five identified conditions and amend with an additional identified condition as-
What are the right words to say? It's what I'm looking for. On 10-foot setback, 10-foot?
Ensure 10-foot separation between the alley and any adjacent property structure.
So I'd like to modify my motion to include the bill that way, which in the fifth bullet, with staff recommendations.
Do I need to resecond that?
Well, yes, actually.
I resecond that.
Well, he hasn't spoken the motion yet, so you can do that until the mayor speaks it.
Call that a friendly amendment. All right.
Can we add screening to that, too?
I'm not comfortable adding screening.
I ponder, I mean, I asked a question on screening, and I ask it really kind of twofold reason. One, I just didn't know. And the more I've thought about screening, there's not screening on any side street now. And the creation of an alleyway, and that's why I asked if we had any property, the adjacent property owners in, in the house, because I was going to ask, I was going to ask them a question. We, we don't have those adjacent property owners. When you look at the map, the current concrete of Fifth Street now, if, I mean, I'm ballparking that map, it's not much farther than 10, 12, 13 feet from that structure, just immediately south of Fifth Street. And so I asked the question, but then I, I'm backing off. Screening of an alleyway, I think that makes it actually potentially worse from a safety and constraint standpoint, and it doesn't, it certainly doesn't help any concern that I heard from any property owners. The one concern from property owners that I think the alleyway doesn't really get to is, and if you look on the map, was, was Mr. Petty's comment of, his is the last house on the block, and he's going to get people turning around. That's the only concern that I heard other than it's different that we haven't addressed. And I don't know of any way to deal with that concern.
And we did hear that people do drive up the alleyway on north anyway now, so I don't know that those people would actually be turning around. They'd probably just go in between the two properties.
Going back to description, and Mr. Ghost had indicated that if they do build an alleyway, you would have turning radius curves. In other words, if you're driving down the street, it's going to look like a street. It's not going to look like a squared-
It's not going to look like a downtown alleyway.
It's going to have to have a, a turning radius built into it, so it's going to be very much looking like a street to everything.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. What was your motion?
I don't remember. That was half an hour ago.
Half an hour ago. I believe-
My motion was to accept staff recommendation to issue closure with the five conditions as listed in the staff report of those recommendations, adding the language 10-foot setback from the house, the edge of the property, to whatever structure, road is built.
Legally, does that-
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
There was a second. Okay. We've got a motion to second to approve staff recommendation of closure with the five conditions in their report, plus the additional condition as Counselor Weaver stated.
Figure it out, don't worry.
That is approved four to one with Counselor Noble voting against the recommendation. Okay. It is approved four to one. Okay, let me get back to our agenda. That's going to take us down to general orders. I don't know if the crowd wants to stick around for the rest of the meeting, or if you'd like, let's take a quick break, and those that do not want to stick around, certainly, certainly leave, thank you. Except for you, you have to stay. Okay, that's going to take us down to general orders, and item A is city council standing committee reports. There is no action to be taken. There were a couple of reports that were submitted and part of your packet, and I passed out a couple of reports prior to the meeting. I don't think there's any reason for us to be reading the reports into the record. They're there. Did anyone have any questions about either the submitted reports or the reports distributed this evening?
I would like to say good job to the committees. I know you're working hard, and it's useful information.
I agree. The, I would like, I would give one additional verbal report that I am the liaison with Payne County, and I have attended a couple of meetings. Monday mornings are not the most convenient times to attend meetings for me, but I've tried to attend a couple and try and continue those relationships, make sure we've got a pulse on what's happening on the county side as well. And so we've had, I've had some good conversations with all county commissioners and other elected officials of the county. Okay. Any other verbal reports from committees that did not submit written reports? Okay. Well, let's keep this going. The committees will have update reports again in the next quarter. Dates were submitted before. I don't remember off the top of my head, but you will be reminded, so let's keep working forward on these standing committees. That'll take us down to quarterly financial reports. Ms. Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilors. My name is Tammy Brown. I'm the accounting supervisor in the Finance Department of the City of Stillwater. I'm going to give you just a brief overview of the report that you have before you outlining the fourth quarter reports, which also is the fiscal year-end. The reports are the unaudited reports. We're currently working on the year-end adjustments. The final reports for the Stillwater Utilities Authority will be available the end of October, and the city reports will be available at the end of December. It was a good year. The revenues are in excess of the budgeted estimates, and the expenditures pretty much throughout the city were held within the, the budget targets. Some very general overview of the general fund. The revenues overall for the general fund for these unaudited financials, the estimates came in to be 97% of the original budget, budgeted amount. Basically, all of the revenues were over the estimates. The only, the only- The only, the only thing that was under that was the transfer from the SUA, and that was on purpose, because that transfer, as it turned out, we didn't need as much as we had put in in the original estimate, because the revenues were higher than we anticipated, and the expenditures were less than we anticipated at the first of the year. The total funds for the city were 100%, 0.18, so just slightly over the estimate that we had originally done for the year. The expenditures for the general fund came out to be only 98, or 90%, 90.61% of the original budgeted estimate. One figure that was higher than that was the transfers out, which actually ended up being a good thing, because that meant that the sales tax revenues were actually higher than anticipated, and those transfers out reflect that we had more, more sales tax to transfer to the Utilities Authority and to the half-cent sales tax fund. The overall expenditures for the city ended up actually being only 89% of the estimate at the beginning of the year. And the Utility Authority, in your report, one thing that we noted was that the revenues for the Water Capital were 93.45% of the annual projection, and that this amount was under what was anticipated and due to a decrease in the water consumption. But this didn't reflect in the operating portion, only in the Water Capital Fund. And the reason for that is in the operating revenues of the SUA, we also had some unexpected revenues from the sales of water to the oil companies, and then also the beginning of the loan chimney contract. The Stillwater Economic Development Authority also had revenues that were over the anticipated amount, and their expenditures were well within what was estimated at the beginning of the year. And that's just a very high overview, and if you have any questions about any of these, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Questions, Ms. Brown? Fourth quarter financials?
I don't have a question, but I just want to commend you for the work you do, especially through the budget process. It was pretty, I appreciate your effort, and you guys do a great job.
Thank you very much.
We've got to, we really appreciate our financial staff, all the way from our CFO and all the people in the finance and accounting, and we're fortunate to have them. It was pretty exciting, you know, we talked about, it's a pretty exciting year-end report. We had a great year financially. We've seen some significant growth in the sales activity in our community. Our revenues are up, building is up, continuing to keep our expenditures under control. Always liked to come in under budget, we came in 10% under this year, so a little more money coming in, spend a little less, that's good for everybody. A little more flexibility going into the future. Pretty excited about it.
Thank you.
It's going to take us down to ordinances, and our first ordinance is ordinance 3276 on first reading. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance closing streets and unoccupied utility easements within an area bounded generally on the north by 12th Avenue, east by the eastern platted boundary of Lynn's Addition to Stillwater, Oklahoma, and West Street, south by the southern platted boundary of Lynn's Addition to Stillwater, Oklahoma, and on the west by Washington Street, including those portions of Ramsey Street, Hester Street, Knoblock Street, 13th Avenue, 14th Avenue, 15th Avenue, and in the alleys and easements located within said boundaries, and further including blocks 1 through 16 of Lynn's Addition to Stillwater, Oklahoma, blocks 10 through 12 of Duncan's Addition to Stillwater, Oklahoma, and blocks 12 and 13 of Sunnyside Addition to Stillwater, Oklahoma, as shown on the recorded plats thereof.
Good job.
All right. Any questions on ordinance 3276?
Tell me, the closure of streets, is this, didn't we, I can't, I'm trying to remember the discussion on it.
Yeah, this is the public hearing we had, and this is the property south of 12th Avenue.
And while it's platted, there's not actually streets and utilities out there.
There are some utilities that are through there. Ms. Dixon, would you show us the map? There's no concrete on the ground.
Right. That's, I just wanted to clarify that. Don't get her all spun up now.
It won't get us dizzy by moving across town pretty quickly. We have driven by the hospital, in case anybody is watching. And...
There you go.
In this area...
That's right. I remember that.
It's primarily just grassland, trees, and some drainage that's occurring in the area.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 3276 on first reading.
Second. Motion to second to approve 3276 on first reading. That's approved five to zero. Takes us down to item B, ordinance 3278 on first reading.
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 29 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Article 6 Pedestrians by amending Section 29-187 Pedestrians Solicitating Rides or Business by adding new Section B providing for an exception, new subsection C providing requirements for issuance of a permit, and new subsection D providing a penalty for violation and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
Questions about that?
Any questions on 3278? Is there a motion on ordinance 3278?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve ordinance 3278 on first reading. That is approved five to zero. It's down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further, Chief.
Councilors, do you guys have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Anything for upcoming meetings? Take that as a no. Sir, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn, city council. That's approved five to zero. City council is adjourned, and we will call to order Stillwater Utility Authority meeting for August 18th, 2014. On our consent docket are two items. Does anyone wish to remove either item from the SUA consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
A motion to second to approve SUA consent docket. That's approved five to zero. And that's going to take us down to general orders. Now, bid recommendation. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Okay. Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Generation and Transmission Division Manager. I'm here tonight to request approval to purchase the new engine generator units for the new power generation station. On June 2nd, the power generation station completion plan was approved. Following the approval of the completion plan, the first step along the critical path of the project was to obtain the necessary funding. That step was completed last week, and funding is now available to proceed with the next critical path step, which is to procure the engine generator units. On June 11th, the 212-page engine generator bid documents were released. In the bid specification, bidders were requested to submit bids for engine generators that had a combined total output between 50 and 60 megawatts. On July 7th, three bids were received and opened. Wartzilla North America submitted a bid for six 9.3-megawatt units with a base bid of Caterpillar Power Generation submitted a bid for six 9.7-megawatt units with a base bid of $29,800,000. Wartzilla North America submitted a second bid for three 18.76-megawatt units with a base bid of $31,202,500. The bids were reviewed by the project engineering firm Burns &amp; McDonnell and electric utility staff. In order to determine the lowest responsible bidder, the bids were evaluated based on compliance with the specifications contained within the bid documents and the total cost to own through the year 2042, which is the year in which the current SUA and GRDA purchased power agreement terminates. In order to determine the lowest cost to own, each bid was evaluated using a net present value model created by Burns &amp; McDonnell. The net present value model combined the base cost, the alternate specified cost, the supplier provided options, the balance of plant cost, and the total operating revenues and cost. The base costs include the engine generators, technical assistance, training, and the required performance and statutory bonds. The two add alternatives included recommended spare parts and low-noise cooling radiators, which will help mitigate noise issue, issues coming from the plant. The balance of plant cost calculations are related to the construction and equipment costs associated with the plant. The balance of plant difference is taken to account all aspects of the construction that will differ between building a three-engine generator plant and a six-engine generator plant. The operating and revenue cost adjustments take into account the differences in projected revenues, fuel costs, and variable operating and maintenance costs associated with each of the different units. The projected revenues were calculated by inputting the equipment specifications provided by each bidder into the payment calculations defined by GRDA in the capacity purchase agreement. The fuel costs and variable O&amp;M costs were calculated using the equipment specifications provided by each bidder, the indexed gas prices, and the output of the Southwest Power Pool production run, model run that was a part of the electric generation feasibility study when this all started. After summing the base cost, add alternatives, supplier provided options, balance of plant cost, and operating revenue costs, the net present value, net present value evaluated cost of each bid as shown from highest to lowest. Caterpillar Power Generation's six 9.7-megawatt units evaluated at $35,030,515. The Wartzilla North American's six 9.3-megawatt units evaluated at $34,169,209. And the Wartzilla North American's three 18.76-megawatt units evaluated at $31,881,515. The primary factors that most influence the net present value evaluated cost are the balance of plant and variable O&amp;M cost associated with building a three-engine plant versus a six-engine plant. Simply stated, it costs less to build a three-engine plant than it does a six-engine plant. Other factors are the manufacturer's rated efficiencies of their engines and their abilities to maintain maximum output during high ambient temperature conditions. The Wartzilla 18.76-megawatt units are the most efficient of the three bids, which means that they burn less fuel per kilowatt hour, creating the lowest operational cost, and were evaluated at best at maintaining maximum output over 100 degrees. This is very, this is a very critical factor, as the GRDA capacity payment calculation uses two primary factors: maximum daily output and heat rate of the engines. It is expected that these units will be called upon to run in extreme heat conditions when the demand on the bulk power system is very high. If a unit has to be derated or decrease output during those times, the capacity payment will be reduced. After reviewing the three bids, the Wartzilla 18.76-megawatt units are the most efficient units with the lowest heat rate. They perform the best in ambient conditions over 100 degrees, and they have the lowest evaluated net present value cost to own. Each bid included exceptions, each bid included exceptions to the terms and conditions contained within the bid documents. At this time, it appears that the exceptions have an insignificant monetary value. However, the exceptions will have to be negotiated with the successful lowest responsible bidder prior to execution of contract. The approximately $70 million estimated cost of the project includes $32,950,000 for the purchase of the engine generator units. The recommended bid amount is approximately $1 million less than the estimated cost. It is the recommendation, it is recommended that the trustees award the engine generator bid to the lowest responsible bidder, Wartzilla North American, for three 18.76-megawatt units, including the base bid, alternates one and two, and supplier provided options in the amount of $31,881,515, and authorize staff to enter into a purchase agreement, subject to satisfactory negotiations of the terms and conditions of the purchase. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Sure, he has a question about that heat factor.
So we're saving $1 million already?
We're, on paper, we're saving $1 million at this point, but as we were told, you can't, you know, we haven't even put a spade in the ground yet, so we can't really, it's a good thing, and we hope to continue that throughout the project.
Will you pull the spreadsheet back up? That is such a major swing between the stated bid and the net present value calculations that are done. I don't even know how to ask the question. I mean, there's such a difference there that, I mean, that just, that gets my attention.
Such.
I know it's all written, written in the report, but, I mean, dig into that, just the bottom few bit, the bottom line? Four lines.
Okay, the bottom four lines. You got it. You know, basically, we took the base bid, which is here. We added in the alternates, and then we added in a few of the other things they needed. When you get down here into the, the balance of plant cost and the variable O&amp;M cost, that's, that's the big factor. The balance of plant cost includes equipment like compressors and switches and conductor and stuff like that. This is, this is versus a six mega, a six-engine plant versus a three-engine plant. And then you start getting into concrete and steel and structure to build a larger building to house larger engines on the balance of plant. When you get into the variable O&amp;M cost, and the, you know, we did the study, we looked out at the revenues that this thing was going to make over the term of the GRDA contract, and, and then looked at the gas cost and what it was going to cost to operate the plant. And so that's where the differences really lie, when you get into the efficiencies of the machine. You may have a machine that has a higher output, but its efficiency's not as good, so you're having to burn more gas to make it. And so that becomes a big player in that calculation. And, and the key is you want the most efficient units that have the lowest cost variable O&amp;M, which is what we found with the three units, with, with the lowest heat rate, the lowest variable O&amp;M, that really paid off.
So the way that I interpret that spreadsheet, and I'm looking specifically at the bottom four lines, is the recommendation, the, the lowest responsible bidder in the recommendation is the, on the far right, the Wartzilla three engine. And even though its base bid is the highest of the three, when we look at the big picture and see that we're going to need to spend 2.2 additional million dollars to go with the Wartzilla six engine, am I reading this correctly?
Yes, sir.
And we would spend another 2.5 million in additional, either spend or lose revenue, 2.5 million, that the total cost to go with a $29 million engine is really 34 million. Is that how I am to read that spreadsheet?
Yes.
Spend a billion dollars more to purchase the engines, but you're net saving 3 to 4 million in construction cost and long-term maintenance expense.
Making sure I was reading that correctly.
And the overall efficiency of the machine, and it making more in the market.
And we're getting, as I asked this question, I realized I'm getting ready to go down the rabbit hole of capacity payments. rabbit hole of capacity payments.
Okay.
But in simple English, as much as possible.
Yeah.
It is, with the capacity payment concept under our contract with GRDA, the more this plant runs, or is required to run, the more valuable it is to GRDA.
Yes, sir.
And the more capacity payment that would be made to the City of Stillwater.
Yes.
So, what I read from your report is the more efficient engines will allow them to be operated for longer periods of time in higher-degree temperatures because the whole concept is, we use more electricity today when it's 99 degrees than we will when it's in January.
Yes, sir.
And so, on days like today, a more efficient machine can still run for longer time, resulting in higher capacity payment.
Yes, sir. The energy part of the capacity payment, yes.
Okay. That's really the second line from the bottom.
The more efficient the machine, the more it will be called upon to play in the market.
You did well.
I tried.
You get an A on your reading, sir.
I tried. All right. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, where are these made?
These are made in Italy.
Oh. Do we get to go over there and pick them up? I'm just kidding.
Do that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So, staff's recommendation is the three-engine Wartzilla North American bid. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve staff recommendations for bid 214-15?
Second.
We have a motion and second to accept staff's recommendation. And that is approved four to one with Vice Chair, I guess you're Chair of this one, your Vice Chair Weaver voting no. Okay. There'd be nothing, thank you, Mr. Smith. There'd be nothing further on this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn Stillwater Utility Authority. That is approved five to zero. We are adjourned.
General.